Leading us to worship, you guys can have a seat. So I'm thankful you're here, again, spring break's always a real interesting time, so we're good. But I'm glad you're here, those of you who are here, you're thankful you're here because you're going to get treated today. When I was your age in college, out in a seminary, the board of directors were always like, who are they? What do they do? And wow, they're here, and what happens, you know? Well, let me tell you, they're just friends who have said, I believe in what God is doing here, and I want to give my time, and I want to give who I am to this school. And so, I'm gonna invite them to come, so I'm gonna let them come on up, Doug, and Bill, Bee, and Honeybee, and Cindy. I'll make my way over here. So all we're gonna have today, and so be thinking at the end of the deal, I'm gonna ask you if you have questions for them. So you can ask questions, I already told them, this is casual, this is not anything that's, you know, formal. This is just a chance for you to hear from some of our board, our trustees. And so, I'm gonna go and just let you guys say who you are, here's your mic, and there's another microphone there, you're not gonna pass it around. So the first question really is, so who are y'all? What do y'all do, and why are you here?
My name is Doug Deal, I am the pastor of Crossroads Baptist Church on the northwest side of San Antonio. So it's a bit of a jaunt around the city to get here from there, but I'm fortunate to be one of the closest trustees physically to the school, and have been a trustee for a long time. And I have a wife, and two grown kids, and four grandkids, and one dog.
My name is Dee Mesquias, and I live here in San Antonio. I am married, and I have four grown children, ten grandchildren, and five great grandchildren. And I wear many hats, so the first one, I want to tell you, I am a nurse, and I've been administrator for forty years. And I started our company, the first primary home care, home care, hospice care, and children care, and I care. So, I started the business twenty-five years ago, and I am the first Latina owner of a home health. Usually, they have a partner or the husband, and my husband said, this is your baby, and I will give you the money, but it's yours. The purpose of starting the home health was, I wanted to be a missionary, and for you to be a missionary, you have to have money. You know, so I said, I'll start a little company, just enough money to give me to where I want to go and serve the Lord, I'll have the money. So, right now, I have eight companies around the state of Texas, but I just wanted a little company. But through that, I've been able to help the people, the employees get involved with what I do. But four years ago, three years ago, we were involved in building a house in the valley. This house, the people lived on a house that was made of cardboard, and when it rained, well, the cardboard was getting wet. So I told the people, we are going to build a house, and everybody has talents, so everybody has talents, and you have talent. So we built the house, and together with Buckner. And so Buckner told us, this was a house that was built very professionally. And so what I want to tell you is to, you can do it, whatever's in your mind, women can become owners of a business.
My name is Bill Bryan, I live in Amarillo, about nine hours away from San Antonio by car, way up in the northwest corner of the state. I'm a lawyer there, I'm a member of First Baptist Church in Amarillo. I'm married to Carol, and a friend of mine at First Baptist Church taught me an expression. He said in his own marriage, which is quite funny, he said, "Bill, I'm overmarried." That's my story too, I'm married, I'm married above my favorite. But I've been serving as a trustee of BUA for a few years now, and it's a rich experience for me, and I want to give all that I can to BUA's experiences of students that are here.
Good morning, my name is Cindy Wilds, and I'm also on the board of trustees here. I was a longtime admirer of this school, which plays a very, very unique role in, I spent my life in, and in our state, and our nation, and around the world. And so, loved this school from afar, for many years before I had the privilege of serving on the board. I'm also a person who wears multiple hats, I think most of our board members do wear many hats. Have a paying job, the paying job is that I am the executive director of a nonprofit corporation called Restore Hope. And Restore Hope is an organization that serves churches, and people called from churches to live in international contexts, to serve God around the world through vocation, through missionary calling, through various ministries. And so, we assist churches in training and preparing people, and then we serve as a mechanism for sending people to live and serve cross-culturally on a long-term basis. And so, that's kind of one of my hats that I wear. The other hat is probably the more dominant hat in some ways. And I'm married to a pastor of the First Baptist Church of Arlington, Texas. My husband's name is Dennis, and we've been serving in Christian ministry together for thirty-eight years, a long, long time, in multiple churches throughout the nation. And so, and in that role, I have many responsibilities in the church, and I think I have the spiritual gift of teaching, and so, that is one of the big roles that I play within my own body, but love being here at BUA.
So then the question I have as a student is, what does the board do? What is their deal? What do they do? Well, so I'll simplify it, they're my boss, right? So these guys are my boss, and they kind of oversee me as the president of the school, and they have fiduciary responsibilities, but they also look at policies, and they do all that kind of stuff, because their role really is to kind of oversee the school. How's the school doing? What's going on? They learn what's going on, so they can help manage what's happening, and they do that for me, because they hired me to do that. So I report to them, we meet three times a year, and we talk during the year as well, so that's kind of what goes on with these guys. So now, this is a very, I told them, I said, this is gonna be a very casual time, because I think it's good for us to know what it is and who they are. We talk about spending time with the Lord, we talk about your walk with the Lord, I want to hear from them, what does that look like for them? So we'll start with Bill, and then y'all can just chime in, and when I think you're done, we'll go to the next question. So Bill, give us a picture, you've got a pastor, you've got a business leader, owner, and a lawyer, and a nonprofit leader. So Bill, tell us a little bit about, what, a couple of questions. What does your time with God look like, practically speaking? And then the other question is, how have you seen God's hand clearly working in your life as a lawyer and as a believer? How have you seen His hand work, say, in the last sixty days?
Well, I'm reminded as Dr. Hockes poses the question about, about how my faith informs what I do, and what my faith experience is. One of my favorite authors, is a man named Malcolm Murray, he used to cease now, but he wrote his own biography, his autobiography called Chronicles of Wasted Time. He was a believer, and that's my story too, as a young adult, I think I wasted a lot of time, so don't you do that. I was thirty-seven years old before I started reading the Bible every day. I was raised in a church, I had wonderful parents who introduced us to Jesus early on as children. My parents spoke at our Sunday School in the First Baptist Church in Amarillo. But I did waste time, and still do, still waste time. But I started reading the Bible at age thirty-seven, and I'm reading every day, I read one chapter, the old one, chapter, and the new. I'm in Micah, chapter six today, the Old Testament, and chapter twenty-three in Acts today. There's no formula about that, I'm sure there are better ways of reading than I do. But I start my day with Bible reading and prayer, when I first get up. And on certain days of the week, I pray about certain things, and my Thursday is the day when I just give thanks. I come out to ask God for things on Thursdays to give thanks. Our worship leaders this morning did a great, was a great reminder to all of us to be thankful. Oh, taste and see that the Lord is good, from Psalm thirty-four. And so, I pray and read the Bible early in the morning. And then, a challenge for me is to remember to pray during the day, as the day goes on. And in my work, I finished forty-three years of practice of lawyer in June, but I learned something new just about every day in my law practice. And I remember something a pastor of my church taught me years ago, Winford Moore. He said, "It's important to keep your word even when it takes the hide." Do you know what that means? Even when it takes the hide means, even when it's to your hurt, keep your word. So that's important, being a lawyer, and dealing with clients or with other lawyers, it's important for each one of you, no matter what your calling is, to keep your word, and that people can rely on what you say. And so, so there's that aspect of my law practice. A challenge for me is sharing my faith with others in my office. We're a small law firm, there are seven lawyers in the office, and we actually work as staff. But I'm very busy with my law practice, and I have occasions to share the Lord with clients. I pray about that, doing that, I don't know how to put it, except in the right way, and not trying to mix my sharing my faith with a legal matter, so that when I do share my faith, when I say the legal matter is cool, and I can then ask whether I might share something about Jesus with a client. And I have clients that are not interested in that, but I have others who are. And so, as you respond to your call, whether it's in a church, ministering in a church, or other ministry setting of that type, or whether it's in business, or in another calling, be sensitive to the Lord's claims on you to share your faith, and be ready to do that, to make disciples of people when you have opportunity to do that. And in the last sixty days, Dr. Hockes, I would say, you know, I am the beneficiary of God's grace every day. And it's a, it is a challenge for me to be able to respond to people with that same grace. If I, in my own mind, feel that somebody is coming up short in the response they're making to me, then I tend to be sharp. And I have to, whether I have to ask God to help me respond with grace to people. And to understand that if an expectation has been unmet in my mind, what's the reason for that? And maybe it's that there's something going on in that person's life, I don't even know about, I haven't considered it. And so, to try to deal with people graciously, as God is so gracious to me, and I'm afraid I'm taking more time than I should have here.
Well, that was a multifaceted question there, but as I reflect on my own relating with God, the relationship that I have with God is very personal and very mysterious, in that, you know, it's hard to describe to someone outside of the kingdom, what it means for the Spirit of God to come and to indwell you, and how that Spirit gives you access to the mind of God. So, you know, when it comes to my spiritual life, my goal is to stay at home, set on the frequency of God's mind, which is, which requires, you know, spiritual discipline, the discipline of being in His word, the discipline of meditation and of prayer. But it's both, it's, while it's sometimes very structured, other times it is just highly relational. I don't just meet with my husband in the morning and have a conversation, and then go and forget him until tomorrow. And it's the same way with God, you know, the dynamic of relating with God is just, is constantly growing and changing, and fluid, and experiential, and so I would say that for me, prayer is a constant. I do have some very structured prayers, but there is, there's just a constant dialogue with God. The older I get, the more aware I am of my own weaknesses, and the more dependent I am upon God to, my hunger and my thirst for Him is greater now than it was when I was even younger. And my sense of calling in this life is that, that God's hand is upon me to ensure through my life that proclamation of the gospel through ministry and service occurs across the world. And so, I spend a lot of time in other nations, I spend a lot of time traveling and engaging the indigenous churches of many, many places. And so, I've just returned, in the last six weeks, I've had just this incredible privilege of being in, all over the world, really, from Sierra Leone to Italy, to Rome, Italy, from there to Ethiopia, from Ethiopia to Tanzania. And in all of that, what I would say I experienced of God was this incredible awe of how God is working through His church in the world, even in ways that we can't see, you know? We went into communities where I was thinking we were bringing something to the local church, and what I realized was that I had so much to learn from the local churches in Ethiopia about suffering, about what it means to strive and persevere in the face of challenge, and how the gospel, the good seed of the gospel prospers just because of its power, it's just a good seed. And so, I've been very inspired in the last six weeks to see how God is working in the world. And I feel very blessed to be the person that I am, and to be in the calling that I have. And so, I just encourage each of you, God has a very unique role. He formed you in your mother's womb, and He knew when He was crafting you, the purposes for which He foredeigned you. And so, learning to just live into that, and to be with Him in that, is just an incredible experience. And so, I know that each of your journeys is gonna be, is gonna be like that, and that He's gonna lead you exactly where He wants you to go, as you attune yourself to Him.
So I'll ask Doug and Bee kind of a different question, kind of the same thing, but a little different. We'll start with Doug, and then we'll go with Bee. So Doug, you're a pastor, Honeybee, you're a business leader, owner of a business. How do you integrate your faith with your work? How do you do that? Your goal, well, I'm a pastor, that's what I do, but there's still, I know there's some challenges there, so I, Doug, once you start, then we'll go with Honeybee.
Yeah, a couple of things, before I answer the question, I just want to say first of all that I didn't, I should have said it earlier, but by the end of his family, lead worship for the Spanish service that we have at our church. I don't get to hear them very often, because they're all over in different places. Man, that was awesome this morning, thank you so much for that. And the other thing I was gonna say was, and maybe this kind of fits the question a little bit, but you know, before I met Bill, I used to tell a joke about how God and the devil were having a border dispute between heaven and hell. Do you know this story? And they argued and argued and argued for years, and finally, God got frustrated with the devil, and He said, you know what? I'm done arguing with you, I'm going to sue. And the devil said, where are you going to find a law here? Well, now we know where, right? Because obviously, the integration of faith and business is something that's very serious, you're a legal responsibility, and that's wonderful to hear. And yeah, you know, it is a little, I won't take long, it is a little more obvious when you're a pastor, because, you know, it's a faith position in a sense. But just remember, if you're headed in that direction, that some of the biggest challenges I face are expectations of people, and making sure that the things that I preach on Sunday are integrated into the way that I lead my staff, and the way that I lead my church. And it's harder than you think sometimes, because there are a lot of folks who will want to say, we gotta apply this business model, or we've gotta apply, you know, something that we've learned out there that, and those are great when they're consistent with Scripture, but sometimes they're not. And so, I would just say, you know, make sure, no matter what your profession is, carry your faith in there, and be a person of integrity, in relationship to faith and application to your workplace.
Okay, and my other hat that I wear, I became the first Hispanic executive director and treasurer for Unión Feminina Missionera, it's the WMU. So it takes a lot of prayer for me to lead all of this that I'm leading, because one of the things that I've learned is to pray and listen what God is telling me to do, because it's got to be His business and not mine. So every morning, I tell Him, "Lord, I'm gonna do your business, take care of the other one." And so, every day, it's a new day for us. We, at Unión Feminina Missionera, started a week of prayer, and that's where we help the students. We have a student here with a full scholarship. I went to their little church in Rondi, and it's just a one-way street. And I had a conversation with her, and she told me, "Sister Bee, I'm gonna graduate in May, and that's it for me, I'm not going anywhere." And I said, "What about school?" She said, "I don't know, and my parents don't have the money to go, for me to go." I said, "I'm gonna tell you where you can go, you can go to BUA, and there will be money for you, I will make sure." And we gave her a full scholarship there, and so we did that, and I helped BUA with money. My family supports this chapel, and so it takes a lot of prayer for me to connect with Jesus every day. What do you have for me today? And so, I want to tell you, students, that if you start with God, everything will flow in. You read the Bible, that's what God speaks to us, through the Bible.
Thank you, okay. So now, what questions would you have for them? We've just got a few minutes left, our chapel's over, because it's not church, it's chapel, we don't talk about that, right? We're not doing church, we're doing chapel. So, what questions? Anybody have questions for any of these board members that you might want to ask? To has a question, Serge, if I go back there, is it gonna go?
Don't worry, it's okay. Thank you for being here, first of all, thanks for being here, and thanks for your time that you invest in this school. I'm sure it's not easy. My question is, part of what BUA is, is the students. And I want to know how the board is not just praying for the students, but how are they participating in the day-to-day, the studying of the students, the spiritual aspects, the emotional aspects of the students' lives? How is the board really investing in that aspect of our lives?
So who'd like to take that, you got about a minute, who'd like to take that question?
I'll take a stab at it. Well, praying for students is important. In the spare responsibility that we have as trustees, we look to Dr. Hockes and his colleagues on the staff to see to the day-to-day operations of BUA. And so, we have a charge though, as trustees, to do what we can, to give of our own material resources, and to lead others to do so, to support the work of BUA, and the establishment of scholarships for students, and to see that BUA has the financial resources that it needs to carry out its mission. So I see that as a role that I can play in the lives of students. And then, I had the pleasure last night of meeting Thiago, a student from Brazil. He gave me a ride from the airport, so I had a great conversation with him, learned about his family, his aspirations, his goals. So there's that benefit too, from interaction between trustees and students.
You want to say something real quick? Okay.
I want to say what we've done to invest in new students. I wanted to encourage you to stay in school, get further education. We supported three students from here that got their doctorate's degree, and they're pastors right now. So I said, "What can I do?" So this book was written, it's thirty-one people wrote on this book, there are challenges that they have in order to get their degree. I found somebody that donated to do this book, and then I found another donor that bought the books, and each one of you will get this book free, and it'll be next week in chapel.
Great, wonderful, thank you so much. You want to say something? We'll take him another question.
Just understand too, that I've been on the board for a long time, and there have been many times in board meetings where we've had a discussion about a decision that needed to be made, and somebody in the board will bring to the forefront the fact that students are the reason we're here. Whatever decision we make needs to reflect an awareness of what is going to benefit the student the most, and how's that gonna help the student. So it's, you guys are not out of our minds, you may sometimes be out of sight, you're in the classroom, we're over here, or whatever, but you're not out of our minds, we understand who our, if I could put it this way, our primary client is, as a school, and it's you, the students. So we appreciate you guys.
Great, all right. Any other question? Another question? Okay. Gotta say it loud.
Hi, is it often like, we're talking about your walk with God, and your, like, your, how that occupation, your daily occupation with, you know, you being a lawyer, and you being a executive, right? A pastor, and you being like part of a, part of the organization. Is it often hard to stay in your walk with God, and just pursue with what He wants for you?
Who'd like to take that?
You know, of course, that it is, it is difficult at times, because life is busy, and I think sometimes the time demands, and the responsibilities that you feel as a leader, even when you're working in a church, right Doug? It's easy to neglect your own walk with the Lord, even when you're leading people to be walking with the Lord. I know, my husband and I have talked so many times, that, you know, sermon preparation or teaching preparation is not a substitute for the time that we spend with God. While it's good, and it helps, it really is not a replacement for that. And so, you know, I think that particularly, if you're a proactive person for the kingdom, the balance between your personal investment in ministry and your own quietness and time with God is always gonna be a stretch for you. And, you know, and I think it looks different for different people, you know? Some people are highly structured, you know, they're gonna get up in the morning, and they're gonna do your, you know, they're gonna do these disciplines, these exercises, and for others, it takes on different form. And I think that, I think the important thing is coming to know how you best put yourself in the position to spend time with the Lord, and to receive from Him wisdom, and direction, and presence, and experience Him in ways that nurture you, so that you can nurture others.
Good, all right. Question? Another question? This is your chance. Yeah, can we stand with you?
Could you tell us about your academic background, where you went to college, what your degree is in, and maybe your favorite class, or an instructor that impacted you in a very positive way?
I'll start, I have a PhD in New Testament Studies from Southwestern Seminary. And that's where I also got my master's degree, and I did my undergraduate work at Oklahoma Baptist University. Favorite class, I don't know, I have a lot of good classes, but honestly, the professor that probably influenced me the most was an adjunct professor, because of the fact that he integrated the daily ministry, he was a pastor of a church, but he also taught classes for the seminary. And it was just wonderful for me to see somebody who had the academic emphasis and interest that he had, but also had the pastoral skills, and the people's skills, and the daily ministry activity that he did. And so, that's just really important to me.
I went to Delmore College in Corpus Christi, and I am a nurse. And the favorite part, I remember, you go through so many areas in the nursing skills, was taking care of the elderly, because the elderly, when they get old, they get pushed, you know? Their children, their own children will not come to see them. So that's why I have a passion for the elderly, and my company does a great part in it. And then I have another degree in business administration, and what I liked about that was the money. Where can I save the money? Where can I give my Lord the ten and above percent, so that He can bless whatever I do? And I can tell you, students, yes, you're struggling in school, but guess what? I struggle too, read my story, but look where God has put me, God is great.
I went to Baylor University, met my wife there, she was a Dallas girl who never heard of any relatives, she met me. She met me. I got a master's degree there and a law degree and took an extra law degree at SMU. After that, a memorable class at Baylor was a Colonial American History class. I was a history major. It introduced me to Roger Williams. Anybody know who that is, Roger Williams? We have a little book to read called The Puritan Dilemma. And it was about the Puritans coming to America for religious freedom, but they wanted only for themselves. But the Baptists wanted religious freedom for everyone. It introduced me to Roger Williams. Let me just say a word to what you could do for BUA. Pray for trustees, pray for Dr. Hockes and his colleagues on the staff. Pray for your professors, your teachers, instructors, administrators. Remember to do that regularly.
Well, I obtained my undergraduate degree at the University of Alabama in Birmingham, where I met my husband in a chemistry class, which was not my favorite class. And the reason that we're married is because I knew I was not going to do well and he was extremely smart, so I asked for his phone number. There's a lot of story behind that one right there. But then I attended Southwestern Baptist Educational Seminary. As far as shaping people, I would say the shaping faculty member, the most shaping faculty member for me was Dr. Jack Gray from the seminary. And the reason he was so shaping was not because of what he did in the classroom, but because of the time that he spent investing in students' lives after hours. And I can't tell you how many times my husband and I went to him for spiritual guidance and mentorship. And he always had time. And he said, you know, there were things that he said to me that I say to myself, even to this very day. He's probably one of the most shaping people in my life as a pastor.
Great. So, we are almost at the time. We've got thirty seconds per person. So, if you had another question, you can ask them afterwards. But like, if you take thirty seconds, that's all you got. Thirty seconds. Why, what is your passion for the school? What is it about the school that moves you to say, "I want to give my time, my effort, my money to the school so that we can help forward the cause of this BUA university"? Why do you do it? Where's the passion come from? Thirty seconds.
You guys are the passion really. I just think about the fact that you're the next generation to lead and especially unique because of the Hispanic nature and character and the cross-cultural nature. There's just no place quite like this and that makes me feel really special and important.
My passion is that to help you, prayer and financially and resources so that you can be the best that you can. We need pastors. We don't have enough pastors around here. And other academics that you're doing, go set your dream and reach for the highest dream that you have. God will see you through it.
So, my passion is from, many times I've heard the stories of students that what you're in our trustee meetings sometimes, like devotions and students bring, but your, the passion that you have for responding to God's calling is inspiring to me and is very engaging to me.
Every generation of believers and every believer within every generation has to ask the question, what is living now, our role in this era supposed to look like? And I think that BUA, I look at all of them, I love all the schools, the Texas Baptist schools, but I look at this one and there are just some very distinct things about BUA that make it perfectly suited for where we are as a nation, for where we are in time, for where we are in the world.
Great. Thank you all for... Now, let's keep being up here. You never know what's going to happen, what you're going to, what we're going to ask. So, it's good. Thank you all for doing that. The whole thing for chapel, the guys, I wanted you to hear from those who are in the trenches with you. They're not somebody somewhere else doing something, but they are invested in what's going on in this school and I want you to hear that. And to give an opportunity to ask the questions of some of your leaders, some of your friends that are a part of this school. I hope it was blessing to you. I don't know what it was for me. Thank you for doing that. Let me...